All right, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Amory Board of Education. And with that, we will skip the, to the spotlight in education for a little bit until they arrive. So we'll go to the consent agenda items.
I had those.
All right.
And everything looked in order, and so I would move to go ahead and approve the consent agenda items.
Okay. Yeah, second, Dale? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Okay. Community comments, we have none signed up. So we will go to our administrative reports.
All right, I'll go first. At the high school, I just, if you would have been in our building for in-service, you would have thought there's no chance that we would have been able to start school. I'm sure that's how our guests from the other buildings felt too when they walked through it. And our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our teachers, everybody really, despite the fact that it was a hundred degrees there, pulled it together and got that building operational. So kudos to everybody involved in making that happen. We had fall fest- fall festival stuff this weekend, Miss Amory festivities, all, a lot of our kids participated in a number of events. That's gone and behind us, and now we have the fun of homecoming week starting tomorrow. So gonna have a great night, we're gonna start something new this year. We're gonna actually have the dance on Saturday night, and it's gonna be a semi-formal, and all kids nine through twelve. I'm sure it'll be a great time. Mr. Benson agreed to come and chaperone with me, I'm so excited to have him there with me, seven o'clock, don't forget, Tom. Future events, we've got the youth rec fair coming up at September twenty-eighth at the high school. It's always a real popular night for people to sign up for their sporting activities. We've got ACP, Academic and Career Planning In-Service. We have a partnership with Amory Hospital and Clinic that the high school's gonna be partnering with this year, that's on October second. The parent-teacher conferences for the high school will be on Thursday, October fifth. We're tentatively scheduled to move to the next phase of our remodel on the week of October ninth. So we'll transition five teachers back to their room, five teachers to a new location, and have to do some transferring of desks and stuff. But week of October ninth, right on schedule, so that's fabulous. And before you know it, we'll have WIA playoffs for our fall sports. Any questions on the high school?
All right, at the middle school, we had a great in-service today, and we brought our staff together, and we were working on PBIS, which centering primarily on making sure we're covering with our students the expectations for behavior, best classroom management skills, and then how to be positive and build positive connections with kids. So that was a great day. Like Josh said, we have homecoming coming up, and we'll be, we're working on a homecoming float for the parade, and we're gonna have a warrior way celebration right before the event, so that should be fun. Our eighth graders will be heading out to Wapo. They go up to the Ox Lake camp, and they work through some of their low ropes course, so they'll be working on team building. And then there's an anti-bully presentation that we conclude the event with back at the high school auditorium. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up here in October. You should be getting a message out from the district sometime on Thursday, I believe, for all families. And there'll be ways for you to come in and meet in person or remotely with, over the phone, or various methods with your child's parents. So we're excited, or your child's teachers, so we're excited for parent-teacher conferences. We follow up with the second in-service day that day, and we're gonna be working in my building on assessments, and the best practices in assessing student learning and how to respond to kids that are struggling. And then we have a student leadership team training coming up on October fourth, where we'll be working with our kids on being strong leaders. We have a harvest dance coming up in a couple of weeks. Also in October, we're gonna be sending out some staff to district-wide, we'll be going up to CSAT to learn about some of the new math curriculum. They're gonna be doing, this is a phase three rollout of some curriculum changes, and that they're bringing forward in math throughout the state. And then we also have some peer tutor training and some peer mediator training coming up, which we're excited for. And then our last day of our first term, believe it or not, six weeks in, is October eleventh. That's the news for the middle school.
It's coming quick.
It is.
We started early.
We did.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, to build a little bit off of what Tom had said, is 2024, we will be implementing new math standards across the state. So part of going to that CSAT eleven, phase three, is we're taking a teacher from each building to compare and contrast our old essential standards to our new essential standards to see how they will be impacted. So that's been ongoing for, for about two years thus far. At the intermediate school, open house went great, that took place the week before school began. I will say we had wonderful attendance, we adjusted the hours a little bit to accommodate working families, and that really worked out to be a positive for us. We really want our families to come here. So students during that time got to drop off school supplies, meet their teacher, they also participated in a bingo activity, got popcorn from our IPO, and then listened to a PBIS presentation from our school counselors. First days of school have gone very well. Morphe magic is actually a science of reading-aligned program that we have just begun to implement based on the recommendations from a CSAT reading consultant, Teresa Stanley. Morphe magic works with students that have some academic gaps of foundational skills. It's by the developer of Top Ten Tools, which is being provided, and funding and encouraged by Motion Fifty-seven and Act Twenty. So that's where that component comes in. So we had three title teachers complete the upper-level training of that, and then they are offering a lower level for our youngers that our Title I teachers will be completing within the next month as well. Fastbridge just took place for the intermediate school last week. It was met with many technology problems, but we did get through it. We will now look at that data over the next couple of weeks, and we will start to build what we call RTI groups, or groups of how we can differentiate our academic instruction to help students close those gaps. New staff essential classes, that is for any new staff member here to the school district of Amory. It's a set of classes that run throughout the fall and the winter months, and they are led by the administrative staff. So the first one occurred last Monday, that one was led by Josh and I, and I'm sure it was a huge hit. I think it went very well. Fifth grade leadership during our first week of school, our fifth grade leadership students set up stations around the intermediate school here and modeled what it was like to follow the warrior way. So I wanna thank our school counselor and our leadership students for that. And then finally, per the DPI, the intermediate school will be conducting our safety drills this week. That's tabletop conversation, so our educators walking our students through what would a crisis here look like, and really walking them through what would the procedures be, and having really great discussion on how we take that safe here and how we keep them safe here. The only thing that Josh and Tom have not touched on that applies to the intermediate school would be the Food for America event. So I wanna thank Derek Meyer and his students for offering that to our intermediate school students. That will take place on September twenty-ninth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm, add just a few things, I've talked about a lot, but we've just got a lot of great things going on here in our district. So for us in our in-service in August, we did some English Language Arts virtual coaching through HMH, which was nice for our building because we have a brand-new, new structural literacy component, which is really on that foundations of reading, following along the science of reading. So that was really nice, it's a new addition into our new HMH service, so that's good. Our staff also held building committee meetings, which they develop goals and, and some visions for the school year. So they're really getting excited and planning a whole lot of fun activities within our building, supporting reading and math, and some, just some fun staff activities to just bind everybody together, so that is wonderful. Today, we also had some HMH in-person training from HMH resources for our reading, and that was really well received. They really liked to have that person from our curriculum resource here in person, being able to ask questions and answer and walk things through with them. So that was really nice. As far as in the community, we hosted our first Lean Parent Organizational Meeting on, on August sixteenth. We had some wonderful people attend. We look forward to having another one on September twenty-first, so everybody is invited to, to the elementary school at eight-thirty for that. There's just been some really great ideas moving forward for our families this school year, along with trying to figure out some, some fun fundraising activities for maybe some new playground equipment to go along with our new referendum. So that will be fun to listen to them. And then we had our open house as well, and, and kids enjoyed it. They left with freezies, and they were happy and excited and looking forward to the school year. So it was really nice, again, to see families then. And our 4K instructors all did parent-teacher conferences right at the beginning of school, so they got to meet with all of their parents and their students, and really walk through what does a day in the life of 4K look like. And just was talking with them today in their committee meeting, they just really enjoyed that part of the start of the school year. So we look forward to doing that more into the future. Really, the only thing that I need to add with upcoming dates is our Fall Fastbridge Benz Mark assessments is starting September twenty-fifth, and then our LPO Cherrydale fundraiser will start on October fifth.
Okay.
All right, the world of student services here. The first thing up is you will hear student services and replacing pupil services. Just based on feedback, student services, I thought, generated a better reflection of the mission of supporting all students. So staff have been shared that information. It's not gonna substantially change what we do, but we'll hope it, we'll be clear in terms of focusing on students, services, making it more transparent to the general public that we're focused on students. So look for that in our special education and general ed initiatives moving forward. For those that, you've been at a lot of these meetings, you've probably learned maybe Indicator fourteen, because we gotta do this one every year. So this is a measurement of post-secondary outcomes for kids with disabilities. And really, what our case managers do is they conduct a phone survey with either the parents of those graduated seniors or the seniors themselves, and ask them, what are you doing? How are you doing? Are you competitively employed? Are you in, on the job training? Are you in, in a four-year school? And we take that information and then use that to inform our vocational activities, or CTE, or special education outcomes. So it's important information, and always interesting to see how that data comes out. And then we, based on the responses of those students that are gainfully employed or engaged in post-secondary learning opportunities, we are actually rewarded a financial incentive through the state. So that's an important piece of this as well, so we'll hear more about that in the future. Nondiscrimination, self-evaluation reporting, this is another requirement. So we're always in the midst of some sort of procedural compliance, as you'll notice. This one is once every five years. And as you know, any, any organization that receives federal funds must have a nondiscrimination policy in practice that prohibits discrimination in the areas of sex, race, religion, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital or parental status, sexual orientation, or physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability. It applies to all areas of the school operations and all sponsored activities, programs, and employees. So this is a real important set of rules and procedures to revisit occasionally. Things like our, is our website updated? Is it accessible? Are we identifying the correct person in the cases of complaints of discrimination, harassment? Are we training staff to, to, to look for disproportional enrollments? For example, if we're not, you know, equitable in terms of accessing, so whether a student has a disability, they're able to enroll in CTE courses, dual-credit AP classes. So a lot of this work involves data that the counselors pull, whether that's enrollment data, review of previous and past complaints, just to look at our procedures, and just in general to train everyone and make them more aware that, that we are, we are, we are bound, and we need to, you know, be aware and looking for any practices or patterns of nondiscrimination, or of discrimination, or complaints around discrimination in, in the area. So pretty important stuff, that report is due December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Finally, just kind of keeping an eye on trainings, the Wisconsin Council of Administrators and Special Services will hold the Fall Conference. I'm always kind of looking at what the topics are. This year's workload determination models kind of help us determine whether some of our programs are closed or open in the future. Staffing levels, seclusion and restraint overview, state complaint decisions, it's always important information to keep updated on, and designing and delivering special education support through inclusive models. So looking for the information to come out on that, and also looking forward to a couple other conferences around building, along with the middle school there, behavior, culture, and climate. There's a rethinking behavior conference, I think, in regionally, I wanna say Missouri, I think, this year, that has some really great training opportunities that we're gonna look for to get some staff to that training.
Where's this conference being held at, Brad?
The, the Wisconsin one is down in the Dells.
Okay.
Okay. I think we have a, a music.
Ready when they're ready.
Yep.
Okay. Hello, so my name is Carrie Moskell, and I'm the high school choral director, as well as I work at the middle school, I'm the middle school choral director. And then I work here as well, teaching fourth and fifth grade general music. Who you see behind me here is, well, their, their name changes based on their outfit. And so today, I guess I get to decide that it's the B-flat Flannels. If you don't know Barbershop Groups, Barbershop Groups like to have a name, and so that is their name. And we, we joke around, we still haven't hit one, found one that we love yet, so today, B-flat Flannels.
That's pretty cool.
All right, the guy, what they'll be singing tonight.
Do they actually have names?
Oh, yes, well, they'll introduce themselves.
Okay, all right.
What they will be singing tonight, they actually performed back in March, April, March? I can't remember, April of last year at Solo and Ensemble Festival, and they actually were awarded Best in Sight. So what that is, is we have, you know, eight sights, maybe four vocal sights, maybe five instrumental, I don't know. But anyways, they were awarded the Best in Sight. That means that the judge thought that they were the best thing in sight, that's what it means. And actually, they were awarded two Best in Sites, because they were part of a larger group as well that took the other Best in Sight, that was the men's ensemble that they all four were a part of as well. So we took fifty percent of the Best in Sight, so hang on. But anyways, all, you know, these guys are just amazing. Yeah, I'll let them introduce themselves, and then I will, we'll feel afterwards that I'll go through as well.
I'm Peter Markey.
Chrisy Ross.
I'm David Williamson.
And I'm Caleb Danlison.
We'll be singing to you Hello Mary Lou.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Pass me by one summer day, flash those big brown eyes my way, I know I wanted you forevermore.
For now, baby.
I'm not one that gets around, swear my feet stuck to the ground, and though I never did meet you before, I said hello Mary Lou, goodbye heart. Goodbye heart. I said sweet Mary Lou, I'm so in love with you.
I'm in love with Mary Lou.
I knew, Mary Lou, that we never parted, so hello, Mary Lou, goodbye heart, goodbye heart. Saw your lips, I heard your voice, leave me, I just had no choice, well, I was just a little bit, yeah, we were a bitch. Not about who they died, I'm about you, good and tight, that's all I need to say for me to stay. Hey, hey, hello, Mary Lou, goodbye heart. I said sweet Mary Lou, I'm so in love with you.
I'm in love with Mary Lou.
I knew, Mary Lou.
We never parted.
We never parted, so hello, Mary Lou, goodbye heart, goodbye heart. Hello, Mary Lou, I'm in love with you, yes, hello, Mary Lou, goodbye heart. Right from the start, I said hello, Mary Lou, goodbye heart.
So I should also say, it's been a busy night tonight. So they, Caleb and Cruz were both came from football practice, actually before this, they were from football practice, then went to musical practice, and then we came here, and David and Peter were at soccer games, went to musical practice, and then came here. So I mean, we have really multi-talented people within our school, and it's so awesome that, you know, we, we work together and we get this done, so that they can do everything, so. So it's been a busy night, right, guys? But we love it. I'm just gonna share a little highlight of everything that's going on in the music department. Do I need to speak here? Well, you could have told me earlier.
They can hear you without.
I'm so sorry, video people. All right, so anyways, I'll give you a little highlight of what is happening in each of the buildings as far as the music department goes. I'm just one of four, so, or, yeah, one of four. So there's other people as well that make the music department what it is and why it's thriving today in twenty-twenty-three. So at Lean Elementary School, we have Shannon Henningsguard, and she told me that they are excited to be collaborating this year with the art department for their concerts. And they'll be having, instead of one big art show at Lean Elementary, each grade level will have a smaller art show at, during the concert. So it'll be right before, in the atrium of the auditorium. And then families will be invited to view the art show from five-thirty to six-thirty before the concert starts. So that, that's just a cool, great thing that the elementary school is gonna be starting, and we look forward to seeing how it's gonna go. At the intermediate school, there are three music teachers. Shannon comes here to teach third grade, and then Catherine Sunderland and I both teach fourth and fifth grade general music, as well as Catherine also teaches the fifth grade band here at the intermediate school. At the intermediate school, we're in the middle of our fall instrumental units, and we're thrilled to teach an instrumental unit each season of the school year. So in the fall, we teach piano and percussion using bells and drums. And then in the winter, we teach recorders, and then in the spring, we teach ukuleles. So we're really fortunate through grants and through your funding that we've been able to bring all those instruments to the intermediate school. And every student in our building plays all of those four instruments, third grade through fifth grade. The fifth grade summer band, summer band lessons went well, and band class and lessons have started now, and they're going strong, so we're excited for them. I believe there's good numbers in the fifth grade band. At the middle school, we have Meredith Rhodes Lundgren, who teaches the cadet band. Catherine Sunderland teaches the sixth grade band, and then I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade choir. The cadet band marched this season, three parades. They were in one competition parade and received first place in their division at Clear Lake. The fall band concert's coming up on November fourteenth, and then she also does a winter band lock-in with the cadet band, which if you've ever had a, a student be in cadet band, you know, it's a great night, best night ever, and it's super fun and exciting for them. The middle school choirs and the sixth grade band are kind of quiet right now, but our first performance will be the winner concert on December nineteenth. So we're already singing Christmas music in September, and if you ask, why are we singing Christmas music in September? Well, we are, because we're gonna be ready to go, so. In the high school, Meredith Rhodes Lundgren teaches the ninth through twelfth grade band, and then I teach the ninth through twelfth grade choir. I also teach the jazz choir that meets in the winter, and then Meredith will be starting jazz band pretty soon here. The high school band's been busy, it's been a busy couple of weeks, and they are not done yet. So they did five parades this marching season, the band received first place at Glenwood City, along with best percussion, so we're happy about that. Caleb's part of that in percussion. And then halftime, they have their homecoming halftime show, and it's, the theme is weather. So I'm excited to see how that all turns out, but that's this Friday at halftime of the football game. The band boosters were able to buy a beautiful, brand-new trailer, which if you've been at any of the parades, you've seen it following the, the marching band, and it's just spectacular, and we're just so lucky to have that. The high school choir is one-hundred-and-fifteen members strong. Our first performance will be on Veterans Day on November tenth, so we're getting geared up for that. We also, though, as you've heard me mention before, are working on our high school musical, and we will be performing Annie. All four of these guys are in the show, as well as many other people. We have a cast and chorus of about four forty people. And right now, that's what Mrs. Henningsguard is over-directing a scene right now while I'm over here with you, because we practice on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, six-thirty to eight or eight-thirty, and then it just, just keep increasing as sports seasons end, and we start to kind of take over then, and it, and then we go crazy. Our shows are November second through the fifth, Thursday through Saturday, the showtimes will be at seven PM, and then Sunday is at one PM. So that is our music department in a nutshell. We're doing beautiful things, just, you can always ask us questions if you ever have any, and we're happy to, to be here in a great school district.
Thank you.
All right, yep.
Sing your way out.
Yeah, yeah.
Go, but, there you go, I like it.
Did you have anything for administrative?
I do not.
You must have really appreciated that.
I actually worked with those kids. We had a couple of our old quartet would get together and we'd work with them on that stuff. And I, I'll tell you, working with kids over the years, I've done a lot of Youth in Harmony events here at the school, and we've had, I think at our peak, we had a hundred-and-seventy-five kids on stage singing Barbershop. Those four guys blend better than most.
It was impressive.
Yeah. Had a little problem with that last note, but. And they were really quick. They sang it really fast, but I tell you, when, when we'd work with them in the, in the back of the auditorium, where it really echoes back there, we got, they got done singing, and I looked at the rest of my quartet, and I said, boy, these, these kids have got it, they've got something special, so.
Yeah, that was impressive.
They do.
Wildly impressive.
Yep. Next, we'll go to our informational items.
Okay, referendum update slash building and grounds update. We had a building and grounds committee meeting last Wednesday. Again, not to be redundant, but Joe and Keith from the board are on that committee, Ryan Pease from Transportation, George Sigsworth as our buildings guy, and myself did a tour. We spent most of our time at the high school, and then I spent a slice of our time across the road at the elementary, because that obviously now is underway as well. I, I don't know that it's fitting that I steal all the thunder and talk about what was seen, but I will concur with what Josh said. If you didn't know, you wouldn't know, because what's happening now at the high school is behind closed doors, and there's a lot happening behind those closed doors, but it is pretty astounding, because literally less than a month ago, there was no way we could have had school. It's pretty impressive. So kudos to Kraus Anderson for buttoning it up, so to speak, it's pretty, pretty awesome. I don't know if the committee members that are all here wanted to say anything, this would be your time.
They're, they're making the headway in an organized fashion that's really cool. I mean, we toured the four rooms that they'll be moving into, and pretty much the mechanicals are done, except for a few things. But other than that, it's come a long way in a short period of time.
Yeah, I enjoyed to see the heart of the, you know, the heart of the school, the furnaces, the boilers, the HVAC system, the stuff maybe no one will even know about.
Probably not.
But the things that had to be taken care of, completed. It's a lot.
It is. And don't forget across the street, I know it's not the same nature of work, but what you're now seeing there, I've had many people ask, why are we unearthing, excavating all the way down to near the tree line by the football field? What you have to remember, it's not just an addition of classrooms, but we also have a parking lot there on the horizon. And when you are upgrading and adding that kind of square footage, you also have to have a retention pond, and that is a part of the excavation as well. It is low-go, because there's a lot of testing that needs to occur, and we obviously gotta make sure we follow the law in, in order to make sure we're in compliance, so that's what that work is. And then there's work inside the elementary as well. We, we have lost sight in some circles that there's upgrades in safety at the elementary. That's the world in which we live, unfortunately, but there are some upgrades there with a common point of entry which shields our kids if they're in certain classrooms behind three closed and locked doors before anyone could ever get there. And then let's a morbid thought, but that is the world in which we live, so that's happening as well. Anything, anyone else wanted to share? If not, we can move on to our athletic stuff, which is sort of an extension of building and grounds. Okay.
Where were they working? What, the rooms that they're moving out of, or that you guys are moving into?
So the rooms that are getting worked on right now is the block rooms that's closest to the community education office. So Mr. Sipioroski, Mr. Stewart on the backside, Jenna Helbig on the corner, and Amanda Rawling just inside of them.
So if you walk down that first artery that turned left and heading down that first hallway looking right out of the elementary, it's your first left. And literally, it's behind closed doors, and there's all kinds of stuff happening behind closed doors, but you truly, you would not know, which is the way we had hoped it would be, and it is, so we're very pleased. The high school staff's been fantastic and cooperative and flexible, we know it's gotta get done, it's gonna be somewhat inconvenient. The high school staff's been fantastic and cooperative and flexible. We know it's gotta get done. It's gonna be somewhat inconvenient. It's just reality of construction. But it's it's work because of this partnership.
So they'll basically shift to the external walls on the west side of that wing, the first four or five classrooms coming up here in a couple of weeks.
What's the timeframe that they, for each section? Are they giving you?
Approximately two months. So if we get in there the week of that October ninth, hopefully early December.
And we're on schedule to have heat for.
We're gonna start little campfires. We'll be good.
Well, there's plenty of clothes and lost and found.
I'll bring the marshmallows and the hoshi bar.
Our our science guys are gonna do little experiments all throughout the building.
Any comments on the floor?
I love it. It it's really the uh, the aggregate, the ground on polished look. I was just, I don't remember who I was telling today as we were walking on, but I absolutely love this floor. I think it's great.
Lot of character.
And it's not gonna take as nearly as much work to maintain too, so that'll be great.
Yeah. So when you're in there, look down.
Yeah.
See that? Good. Thank you. Alright, now we'll move into our athletic facilities upgrade.
Uh, the first portion of this is presentation and discussion throughout. You could stop me at any point in time, and and I'll actually stop myself and and explicitly let you wait in, uh, because this is a conversation piece. Uh, we have Troy Miller from LHB Architects and John Hewnig from Cross Anderson Construction. They're the lead people on not only design, but also construction. And there are some, there are some information that's directly from them, so while that, them respond. If you have questions for them, they're here for that reason. They, it's not that they don't have a social life. They literally are here because they want to be. Well, maybe, I don't know about Troy. No social life? Okay. Alright. The Warrior Athletic Facilities Upgrade Discussion. This is a slide that you've already seen. It's a slide of why. I don't want to be redundant once again, but this is uh, what we had talked about last time. We have a facility that is outdated. We've got a football field that's nineteen eighty. I don't know the total number of ballgames, but that's forty-three years worth of ballgames. That's a lot of ballgames. And that's not just varsity. We play other versions of football on that field as well. Track's nineteen eighty as well, and was asphalt back in the day, rubberized in nineteen ninety-eight, and then spray coated in in twenty eighteen. Baseball field's nineteen seventy-eight, so shortly after the high school was built, so that's moving towards fifty years old. Upgrades in the infield and new outfield, the fence in two thousand and seven. Uh, softball isn't ours. It's Jorgensen Field, and that's owned by the city and operated by the city. Uh, and soccer has a uh surface that's closest to Minneapolis. Uh, but it does take a great deal of wear and tear, largely because of where we live, and it's a grass surface. It's tough to upkeep grass when you have inclement weather. Uh, we're looking to meet the needs of the the most middle and high school kids that we can, and frankly, the most kids four K through twelve, because when you include youth sports such as soccer and football and baseball, that's hundreds of kids as well. And if we choose to do this, if you choose to do this, I should say, we will have the opportunity to put those kids on those fields too. The district is debt load is very low, less than point five percent of our budget over the next five years, as we talked about in our budget uh listening session or community engagement session. The district's been financially responsible. That's why we're in this position. District finances allow current, uh, currently allow for a payment of app for athletic facilities. There's no school tax increase with this plan, and Cross Anderson's already here to bring them back. Costs you money to bring them back. So these are the whys, and I heard many members of the board say, we've got it. We've heard the why. We don't need to be convinced. We gotta do something. That's what I have heard. Now it's a matter of us moving into the heart of the matter, which is what is it that we want to do and at what price tag? And that's what we're gonna see in the subsequent slides. So as you move to the next slide, this is a slide shared with me by Cross Anderson, the pros and cons, turf versus grass. That's been a conversation we've had recently. I don't need to read a slide to you, but yes, there are pros and cons when you talk turf versus grass. And I did do a little bit of a literature review, uh, and found some highlights that I would like to share with you that sort of encapsulate the specifics that you see here. There are certainly pros and cons in both. The one, two factors in my mind weigh heaviest, the ability to upgrade whatever facility or update whatever facility we have to keep it up and playable. And the second, uh, the ability to get on that field as much as possible, so we can have as many kids playing sports as possible, and that includes Fayette as well, so let's even more kids. So the pros and cons, there is more. The varsity field could be used for physical education, band, and curriculum. There's all sorts of curriculum that the kids are out on surfaces to do and sports. Uh, triples the amount of use of the fields. Uh, you're gonna extend the year, and you're gonna extend the number of activities. All age athletics could use the varsity field. U-Soccer starts in the elementary school with very young kids, and there are a lot of U-Soccer kids on those fields on on Friday nights. If you stop here, you won't find a parking spot, put it that way. The spring sports season could begin much earlier. I don't know the exact date we got on the baseball and softball field, but it couldn't have been much before Mar- May first. I'm thinking it might be this, might have even been the second week of May this year. With a a turfed surface, you could potentially have your kids on the field if the temperature was right as early as April first. Uh, less maintenance, uh, mowing, lines, chemicals, uh, that all costs money, that all costs time, that all costs money because of product costing money. We spend a lot of time on those fields, making sure they're ready. Uh, more level fields. We have playing surfaces, and I can not speak to it as well as coaches can, but soccer is not an incredibly level field at play in places. Football certainly isn't on the practice field. Uh, it also has issues on the actual playing surface. And baseball field, as we've discussed, has a lot of uh, issues in regards to its playability as well. Uh, less grass stains and cleaner uniforms on an artificial turf surface. No bare spots or sinkholes. There are both of those. A soccer field in front of the goals is entirely a bare spot, and there are sinkholes in spots definitely on our practice fields where it is creating injuries for our student athletes. Continued, uh, the initial cost, and this, if you wanted specific questions, you could have John Hewnig, who presented this information, share with you. The initial cost of two million, you got a re-crown, you have a drain tile, irrigation, uh, the field would cost about five hundred thousand. Recommendation is that grass fields are not used for a year, year and a half. So if we put in grass at the football field or grass at the baseball field, you'll be off that playing surface for at least a year, uh, maybe even as long as a year and a half, which would cost you for sure one playing season at home, perhaps potentially two. Replacement of the turf is twelve to fifteen every twelve to fifteen years. That's a six hundred thousand dollar um, uh, fix, if you will, uh, the replacement. Uh, perception that turf is in, infield is unhealthy, a- although countless studies have shown it is safe. Uh, infield can be trapped in shoes or clothes, which is a minor concern. And lastly, a very healthy grass field may be safer in terms of falls and strains. Nevertheless, school districts generally do not have the funds or the acreage to maintain healthy fields, and we're gonna talk about that and have actual specific prices here as we come up. But before I go any further, I'd like to stop to see if you have any questions, and if you wanted to have questions for John, because he prepared some of this information, so I'll turn it over to you.
So the soccer, um, we have a pro there that allows soccer to be played in established football stadium. Um, and you were talking about the youth soccer, but I believe that the representative from the youth soccer said that they cannot by by legal means, right? I mean, there's sanctioning.
Cannot do what?
Play soccer on turf.
I've had conversations with Amy, and that is not accurate. They could play on our, on our turfed surface football field, and they can also play wherever they're presently playing, which is um, by the tree line at, by the football stadium. Even with a parking lot, their fields are so small, you would simply shuffle them further to the north. They would be able to play all sorts of spots. They don't need a lot of space, truthfully. When the kids get older, the fields get bigger, then you need space.
So the AAU is okay with?
It would be AYSO, it would be the youth hockey, the the youth hockey, the youth soccer association. We've already had conversations. They're simply waiting to see what we're gonna choose to do, and we would find a spot for them. Part of that consideration is if Jorgensen is in the offing or if Jorgensen's not, because if Jorgensen's not, then you gotta get a softball field on the campus. And that's a process we simply haven't concluded yet. Um, we'll know more about that in the next month. So that could free up space as well. Other questions about playing surfaces? There is more information yet. You know, the really the three biggest items that you're gonna see in my literature review are safety concerns, field availability, and cost. Now, when I say literature review, it's pretty tough to say that I reviewed all the literature, because I have not. It's an enormous topic.
When it, when it comes to the the playing surface itself, one of the problems I've had with this is not recognizing that we need to do something, but making sure that whatever we do is the right thing.
Yes.
And my concern is that, uh, you know, if if you were to say your turf fields come in a rating of one to ten, and we're being quoted a five, what do you get for a six? What do you get for a seven? What does that cost? Does that change, you know, the surface itself? Does it change the playability? Does it change the safety features of it? I would like more information on what the true options are.
That's an October board meeting item, and I was actually gonna broach the subject with you after I concluded this presentation. I think it's potentially time for us to schedule a meeting just for this, because this is a big topic, and you can't really fit it into a regular board meeting when you've got uh, community engagement, annual meeting, and budget hearing as well. So perhaps it's time for us to do that, because if you're gonna enter into this arrangement, it's it's November when you do that, and that's right around the corner.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is all, this is great information, but I have more questions that are not encompassed here on cost. I think if we prepared those questions and I, and we talked about those as a board, we could have that information more readily available, so.
Absolutely. So what I discovered in my looking around on safety considerations, uh, field availability and costs is as follows. The conclusion from the research is that there is, the comparison of artificial turf and natural grass suggests that the injury rates are relatively equivalent in most cases, with a couple of notable exceptions. Higher rates of foot and ankle injuries occur on artificial turf surfaces. Higher rates of knee injuries occur with elite-level American football players. Well, we're not that, so the second really isn't a consideration for us. And the third, concussion rates are higher on natural grass surfaces. The importance of field maintenance. The research data provides a strong indication that the maintenance of the playing surface is of more importance than the surface itself. So if we chose to replace the existing football field with another natural grass football field, we'd have to be ready to make sure that field is kept up. We'll be in the same boat in the future, and I would think we would not want to do that. Do we have the manpower to get that done? I would contend, right now, we absolutely do not. That would require a couple of more knowledgeable people about the upgrade of grass, not just hiring people, but knowledgeable people and paying them. And that's gonna be cost-intensive to do that. The artificial turf and natural grass surfaces must be well-maintained to minimize injury risk to student athletes. Right now, we don't have well-maintained grass surfaces. They're maintained to the best of our abilities, and what that means is they're mowed, they're lined, and they're watered. That's about as far as it goes. Could we do more? If we made an investment to do more, then we could. Artificial turf surfaces must be maintained, but do require less maintenance than natural grass surfaces.
Do we know what that looks like, though? Because it's more than just moving around the 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 black particulates, right, right? It's way more than that, because you're talking, you're no longer mowing, right? So you don't, you're not breaking things up, sticks, leaves, twigs, whatever it might be. So you're having to clean that surface, potentially sanitizing the surface. So do we know what maintenance looks like?
That's the conversation we're having in October. Yes, there is a cost to maintenance of artificial turf surface. The research simply concludes that it's less of a cost than would be a grass surface. And part of that reason is based on where we live, because it's harder to maintain grass surface in a, in, on, in a not a very nice climate when you get out into September and October at times, or April, May. Financial considerations. Artificial turf is an outstanding option for many athletic organizations due to its low maintenance costs and higher degree of usability. Artificial turf can host a wide variety of sports on a single field with a greater number of hours of use per season compared to natural grass fields. The cost of maintaining natural grass fields is significantly higher, watering, fertilizing, watering, lining, mowing, et cetera. So the recommendation out of the research that I discovered is that artificial turf surfaces should be considered in organizations without adequate funding to support consistent year-round professional grass groundskeeping. We don't presently have that. If you wanted to make a financial commitment to doing that, then then we would be able to do that. But again, it's not just about um, bringing in folks. We would need to bring in knowledgeable folks to maintain grass. You would also have knowledgeable folks with a turf surface, but there's less maintenance to be done. Natural grass surfaces should be considered for well-funded organizations which possess appropriate funding to support professional maintenance protocols. College programs and and uh, professional programs, I imagine, do have natural grass, and they have probably a fleet of people that are devoted to just that cause. The Amory comparison, and this is what I've said rather consistently over the last month. The school district of Amory does not have professionally maintained playing surfaces for their athletic teams, so we don't really have a comparison to make, because we've never done the well-maintained grass field. To say it would be better than a turf surface? Well, it's right now, it's an apples-to-oranges comparison, because we haven't done the first. We haven't done grass in the way that it potentially could be done. There is an inherent risk right now in our student athletes practicing and competing on substandard playing surfaces. Our football practice field is creating injuries. Our football playing surface is creating injuries. That is true. That is happening. A comparison of the incidence of injuries in Amory, student athletes playing on artificial turf versus natural grass cannot be made based on the poor quality of existing natural grass playing surfaces. We have eighty-four and counting holes on the football practice field. That's not a well-maintained grass field. Could we do something different there? Absolutely true, we could. It's a matter of us making an investment in doing that. Here is the president, present maintenance costs of natural grass, and that John put this information together. I'm gonna turn it over to him, so you can best understand it.
Sean had asked to just kind of uh, total up what our expenses were uh, for grounds. Uh, the issue being, of course, we we don't track specifically, like I said, during our our uh, our listening session. We don't track by athletics grounds. So what this is, is this is a representation in the first vertical column of total expenses for groundskeeper, or for groundskeeping salaries, fringes, supplies, and services. And then it's if you make the assumption that thirty-three percent, forty percent, or fifty percent of total expenses went just to athletics. I would say that the 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 best guess is probably, it it just depends on the the time of year. Um, obviously, in our winter months, we're not doing anything, uh, but during the summer months, we're prepping, we're planning. So it probably lies somewhere between that forty and fifty percent assumption. And then on the next slide is those particular costs in the left column adding, uh, with adding one full-time or two full-time employee to better maintain that grass. So if you look over on the far right, if the thirty-three percent assumption is made from the previous slide, the additional full-time employee would be fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's with salaries and fringes. And then the total total cost is up there in in that right column. The one thing that's not including is additional maintenance uh, supply costs. Uh, so, and that's just costs that we don't know yet. Is it gonna be another mower? Is it a different type of mower, different type of striper? If if, if you have any specific questions, I can definitely break it out a little bit further. Um, but this was just a a best educated guess, if you will, of what the hard cost would be.
And this only focuses on grass, but there is no um, comparison as far as turf, and we're hoping to have those numbers in October?
We're gonna go further. We're gonna, should get on mic here. We're going to go further with our cost analysis and talk about what is the cost of a high-level turf field, a medium field, and a less-than-medium field? What is the cost of putting in a grass field? And then what are the the turf maintenance costs that parallel this particular slide here in the previous slide? So yes is the answer in long form. I should have said yes.
Yes, I got it. I got it.
Uh, there is limited use of our fields presently, not not to state it again, but we don't typically get on our fields early, and we are off them earlier than we would like. Our hope is that we could expand that timeframe rather than getting on mid-April, early May. We would be hopeful to get on our fields as early as the first of April and as late as the first of November. Temperature-dependent, I imagine we would have just that from softball, baseball, et cetera. On that next slide, I believe it's the next slide, you would see exactly who would be using that field. It's it's pretty much everybody. I guess the only group I don't have on here is marching band. Marching band would be on there as well. Everything they're doing presently for homecoming show on Friday, they're doing it on the grass surface, not on the actual field. They would be all over the turf football field if in fact they could. We don't have them on there now, because we're trying to make sure it's ready for game day. So all of these activities could be on there, and there's probably. So all of these activities could be on there, and there's probably some that I haven't thought of. And, uh, again, temperature dependent, we could triple our time, so to speak.
I know, talking to to Mr. Shu, I asked him some questions, and he said his conversations with other teachers, districts, um, the FIAD alone are are, you know, at each other, trying to get onto those turf fields.
And if we had a turf field, we would probably have others that are not Amory folks that would wanna be on those fields, because it's an, uh, not a luxury, but in the part of the country we live in, sort of becoming a necessity, or your fields are gonna look like ours, which is not good. So the big conclusions, and then I'll turn it over to you for discussion. I don't think there's much more. Well-maintained natural grass fields may decrease student athlete injuries. And I'll quote the hospital, I talked to folks over there. They said to me, I'm, they said, we, I, is it, I was talking to one person, are not certain that that's true. I think the results are inconclusive, the research is inconclusive. There's not higher rates of injury on artificial turf, in their opinion, based on what they're seeing. But are not financially responsible for our present level of grounds, staffing, and our harsh climate. The implementation of artificial turf will provide more playing field use for far more teams and student athletes without an inherent increase in injury rates for our student athletes. Those are the big conclusions for us, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's more. Oh, the financial. So let's talk about how we were gonna do this again. We made reference to it in our meeting prior to this. This is information you've already seen before. So where you see the black bar, the up-down, the bar graph, that is twenty-two, twenty-three school year, where we paid two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars in debt within our revenue, within our our revenue limit. We are presently in this year paying approximately ninety-nine thousand. So if you leveled levy two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, you could take the hundred-and-thirty-two thousand and apply it to a variety of things, whether that be adding it to Fund Forty-Six, where you do a special project like paving the road down the center of campus. You could add it to the fund balance, you could use it to pay for athletic facilities, or something else altogether, different. So if you expand that black bar out for the next twenty years, two thousand forty-three, two thousand forty-four, it does not increase taxes for forty-four years. What it does is it says in your budget, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand every single solitary year is gonna be devoted to athletics. That's what you'd be saying. You can make that black bar whatever you want it to be. You can make it two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, four-hundred thousand, whatever you want. Remember, that black bar of ninety-nine thousand represents point two percent of our entire budget. So if you increase that bar higher, you would be moving not much past a percentage or two of our entire budget. We are in financial position to move that black bar forward if we want to. So that continues out for the next twenty years. If you look at the amortization table of this, and I know there's a lot of numbers, and it's awfully small, but basically what you're looking at is that second column over, where it says existing Fund Thirty-Eight debt service. You simply are making that number two-thirty-two, or whatever number you so choose, all the way down through forty-three, forty-four, and that frees up the money that you would use to be able to do the athletic projects. If you used Fund Thirty-Eight and referendum contingency, you will be able to get out to four million, five million, and six million dollars in regards to your cost of athletic facilities without changing anyone's tax bill, because it's money that's already in our budget within the revenue limit. So these are the three options. We paired it from seven, or I paired it from seven to three. So you would have a little bit, a a better ability to conjure what's here. These are creations, uh, from Cross Anderson and LHB. I want to stress to you at this time that these are rough estimates until you know interest rates, and until you know what bid is for excavation or whatever work it is, you don't know for certain what that cost is gonna be until we know what that cost is gonna be. So at four million dollars, you could use Fund Thirty-Eight for four million of it, and, uh, you actually wouldn't need to use any referendum contingency. That's a mistake on my part. That gets you your four million. Your pros of this particular option here, which is a football field, and you have a soccer field on that football field and a new nine-lane track. You're moving your press box and your bleachers and your tree line to be able to do that. You do minimal walks and plaza improvements, and that's the area where you enter their football field at the beginning. And you do some minor baseball and softball upgrades. All of that can happen for four million. Now, what it doesn't allow you to do, it doesn't put LED lights at the football field, and there is a problem there. Um, it doesn't do much more than minor upgrades at baseball and softball, and I would contend we need major upgrades at baseball, and we need to talk strongly about softball. And to turf the baseball field is an additional one-point-four, so that's what kicks you out into the five, six million. So the second option is five million. That's four million dollars through Fund Thirty-Eight and a million dollars through referendum contingency. Again, in the referendum, and the referendum question for the purpose of is what it states, and any of the site work that you do that's athletics can fall under the auspices of referendum if things come in budgetarily where we want them to come in, and presently they have. So the pros of this particular option, and the option is that you are doing the very same things with football, soccer, moving the bleachers, moving the press box, all of that information. And then you're going across the street, and you're doing some work there. So what it is, is an artificial turf surface for football and soccer. You have LED lights at the football field, which I would contend would be a game changer based on what football coaches have shared with me. A new nine-lane track. Baseball upgrades would be grass is regraded, the top dress, irrigation, new fence in the in the outfield, and, uh, new dugouts. Minimal walks and plaza improvements. The con, the big con is you miss a year of baseball games, because it's a grass surface, and you can't play on it right after seeding it. That would tear it up, and it would be unplayable again rather soon. So that's a second option. And the third option is a six-million-dollar option, where you're doing five million through Fund Thirty-Eight, and you're doing contingency of a million. That's an artificial turf football and soccer, not to say the same thing again, but you're adding one other thing, you're adding visiting team bleachers on the other side. The visiting team bleachers have a pu- pathway that gets you over there. It's something that many of our opponents, it would look very similar to what Osceola has done, if you've been there recently, with their visiting team bleachers. New nine-lane track, artificial turf baseball field with a new fence, will not miss a season of home games, and you have an allowance for a softball upgrade. And again, I can't really share anything with you on softball, because I don't have anything final on softball. That process is ongoing. We'll know a heck of a lot more here this month, though. The cons, funding. Is it something that you want to do at the price tag of six million dollars? Again, it isn't a tax increase, but it is money within our budget rather than that. So those are your three options pared down from seven. So I I I found it perhaps a little more palatable to process three rather than seven different things. Maybe you disagree, but I thought it would be easier.
And all of these options are moving this football field from where it currently is to a new location?
No, the football field stays right where it is.
These are.
In all three of these options.
All three of these, because they would be staying instead of creating this new location.
Yes.
And why did we scrap that?
I I, you haven't scrapped anything yet. This is your call. But in my opinion, the reason that we wouldn't do that, I think, is twofold. I don't think in the community's eyes, it would, it would, it would be well-received, because it looks a little over the top. Now you've got two football fields. And my bigger fear would be, what is that existing field? That's just sitting there that no one wants to play on. What happens to that in five, ten, fifteen years? I think it'd become an eyesore, and eventually we'd be raising it anyway. And I think that would be a cost we would not want to incur. Those are my lines of logic, but again, this isn't my decision to make. I'm simply narrowing the options. If you want that that option to be back on the table, you will see it again at our meeting in October, or at the regular meeting in October.
So do we totally excavate out the existing track, then?
To do a new track? I'm not the guy that knows that work. These gentlemen would.
Is there any changes in funding for the geothermal?
That's the next item on the agenda.
That's coming up.
Next.
John, why don't you come up and talk about that just for a moment? The the track surface, what needs to be done there? Because it isn't just a track on top of dirt. There are multiple layers underneath.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, so the entire track will be demolished. Uh, the football field will be gone. It'll go probably two or three feet deep, so it'll be quite a hole. Other than the tree line that's behind the press box will be gone, and the track gets bigger. So basically, it's because of soccer, um, everything gets wider, but it's in the same zone. It's gonna look very similar, but it was bigger in artificial turf, if that's what you choose. If that makes sense. So right now, the track is probably here, and it's pushing us. So the bleachers could push back, be to the west, right?
Uh, yes.
That answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
So I know there's a number of schools that have turf football fields, um, area schools. Are there any baseball fields in the area?
Baldwin.
Okay.
River Falls.
River Falls, yep.
Okay, so they're they're out there for baseball.
And I know that in in the springtime, Baldwin was hosting games from all over, just because they were the one that was up and running.
Yeah, okay.
I contend if you strip that baseball field surface out and put another grass surface in, even with well maintaining it, you're gonna have the exact same problem you have right now with Gophers. They're simply gonna pack their suitcases and move out, and then pack their suitcases and move right back in. And the only thing that you'll have to show for it is our baseball team got to play on the road for an entire season. I believe we can turf that field, and we can reasonably do 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 so financially, and I think it's the right thing to do, because this is our one and only chance to do it.
I just have a lot of questions, and it's all based off of what happens with softball.
Not all of it, but some of it is. Uh, there is promising conversations that are ongoing there between the district, the city, and there is an endowment, to not to get in the weeds with all of that, but an endowment that's under the Jorgensen name, because it is after all Jorgensen Field. And there is red tape paperwork connection there that you gotta work through. Um, but the endowment, and this isn't a secret, is specifically earmarked for improvements of a softball field or youth baseball, which is exactly what we would seek to do. Uh, there isn't anyone using it at present. Uh, there isn't a church league or men's league that's using it. They have, but not in the recent last couple of years. Um, and we would, we absolutely would, we would make it into a softball field. There's nothing wrong with its location. It's right next to us. It would be awesome to have that. Because to put in a softball field from scratch, I'm assuming would be a lot more money than to upgrade an existing template of a softball field. I mean, that's just, I think, a no-brainer. So yes, there's promising conversations, but the city council has to go through their proper channels, too. They've got rules of the road there.
Basically, if we put the football soccer field to the south of that baseball in a new location, we would probably save money from having to excavate this one.
If you, if you move the football field.
To a new location.
To a new location, the price.
I think you're you're talking off the left of the screen here, Keith?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we we did budget that one up, and it's actually, the price is fairly similar, because you're you're gonna do the same, right? The same excavation, the same track. Um, you're actually moving the bleachers further, uh, moving the press box.
Once you move them, you're moving them.
Yep, um, you're true, but the cost-wise, doesn't necessarily save you money. They're pretty close in comparison, whether it's to the south or where it is here.
But if you move it, then you have another field to maintain.
Well, like, you know, eventually this one would, uh, would go way down the road.
Yeah.
You have bathrooms.
You know, I'm just, you know, curious, is the, this kind of puts that same bottleneck, parking and traffic. It doesn't change that at all.
Yeah, the other, uh, a little bit added cost to the option, move it to the south, and you wouldn't have to do this. One of the options that LHB drew was additional parking, so that did cost more, because this doesn't have much additional parking, except a better driving entrance here, but. But that option could come forward again, and we can review that with you and show you some of those pros and cons.
My estimation in in talking about this, we wanted to do everything we could on our playing surfaces before we started talking parking lots and traffic patterns, because playing surfaces is what directly benefit kids.
Right.
Parking and transportation, not as much. But it is a problem. I'm not here to say that parking scene on campus is good to go, because it is not.
One of the concerns that you had, uh, if you were to move that field all the way to the south, was that you didn't have restrooms.
That is true.
So if you're doing, if you're doing some work on this field, is there upgrades that have to happen to the restrooms here, or are they grandfathered in?
Not re- not that they'd have to happen, but you're correct, your concessions and your restrooms would be back across the street. Unless we put that in the budget to build a new one, but then that just raises this.
I think the 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 electrical and the plumbing of that would be exorbitant, based on my conversations with John.
Yeah.
It'd add significant amount to rebuild that. And the codes have changed, and she put that in, too, for the number of restrooms you'd need and how it's built. So it would be quite spending to rebuild that. Seems like a simple building, but it'd be expensive.
But if we moved it closer to the high school, the high school bathrooms would meet that.
That's a possibility. You could keep the doors open and use that. Hudson does that a little bit, and that was a code, if you've been on their field at all. They do have concessions and restrooms under the bleachers, but it didn't meet code. So they work with the building or the permit official, and they keep their building open for games and use the restrooms in the high school.
Rice Lake is the other one. They have concessions and restrooms that they use in the school.
There won't be any mischief there.
Where where the restrooms are located in the high school, you're talking a half mile. It's a long walk from a proposed site to a small, two-stall bathroom next to the art room. That's a long haul to the closest restroom.
Well, I know in that, uh, view that they had like that, though, they had the football soccer field way to the east and the parking between the building and that. So what about moving it closer to the high school and the parking to the east of it? You know, then you wouldn't have that distance.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd still have.
The closest small restroom is is still gonna be the art room. That that's the closest, and it's not a big restroom, so.
No, it's two stalls. That's it.
I think that's what we have there, the concession, right? Is it two or three stalls? At the existing football field?
If you did, you would open up the cafeteria and use that, probably use it, use the concessions in there, use the bathroom.
Right.
I think it's something where you follow people through the, through the space to ticket and follow up with your, like you want, like you get it.
And then everybody can see that nice new existing structure that was put in.
Two words in one stone. Is there more? The calendar is important, so let's not forget that. We can, could certainly continue the conversation, but the calendar is as such. So we have a meeting, uh, athletics, buildings, grounds, all the rest, all of us with KA and LHB coming up here in a little over a week to talk about the very questions that were brought up tonight. They heard, they'll know sort of their charge, based on what you've shared here this evening. We have an athletics advisory committee meeting. It it is something that you've heard about, but I haven't physically invited you to it. So if you're interested in continuing that conversation with the athletics group, you're familiar now with who they are. That's happening on the eleventh. Then we have a board meeting here on the twenty-third. If you're going to enter into a, uh, a a resolution to borrow money, which the three million, four million, five million, say whatever option you choose, if you choose to do that, you have to have a resolution. You have to pub- publish that resolution in the Amory Free Press. There is a petition period where the public would be able to petition, saying yes or no, and then that petition period ends in thirty days. The reason that we have to do it in November is because if we're going to do this, we need to have the ability to draw the design, and we have to have the ability to put out bids and enter into contracts, and you can't do that in March. We gotta get that done in January, and at latest, February to do that. And then you would borrow your money, and we would begin our work as early as we can get out there and do it. And again, Cross Anderson's already here, literally right next to it, with what we would be doing. So that's the time, but there are other particulars in there, but it would probably put you to sleep to do all of those particulars. These are the big broad brushstrokes, things coming up.
There wasn't a use it or lose it.
Uh, there there is, you have to, if you want to enter into the Fund Thirty-Eight option, you have to exercise that option by the end of two thousand and twenty-four.
So my under- understanding, right, that we need to figure out the money side of it by November and the detail-y side of it in going into January, February?
Yes, I believe the money side of it is gonna be determined in tandem with what it is you really have as your highest priorities, and what the athletics community has as their highest priorities. Because what you do determines what it's gonna cost, but I know you gotta work the other direction. We don't wanna spend more than X, so what can we do with X? There's that, too. So it's really a matter of threading that needle. Um, I'm not the one casting the vote, I get that. But this is really the last option for us to do this, unless you're going to referendum for it. And and I can tell you right now, there's not a lot of love out there for a referendum, including from me. This is our one and one and only opportunity to do it in this way. And I and I would encourage you to try and get as much of it done as we can now, and put it to rest, so to speak.
You don't think the love for referendum related to sports complexes is different?
You know, in hindsight, we could have dropped that six million attached to what we presently did, but but I think we were all, at least in this room, very fearful that is this gonna be the effect of perhaps a pool being attached to it, and then all of a sudden, the whole thing? This is just simply too much, I'm voting no for the whole thing. We could not afford to not do what's happening at the high school and elementary school. We couldn't. I mean, the high school is in disrepair in a really big way and it's getting better by the day, but it's fifty years old and the elementary's over sixty. I, I was very nervous about that. The price tag was already big enough, let alone adding athletics in there. And there is a contention to people and I've heard from them. They say, I, I'm not gonna vote to increase my taxes to improve athletics. You can play athletics right where I played it. There's that group too and there's the, there's the line of logic there that you can, you can buy. This seems over the top, if you will. The only question and the only information provided to us on the survey that was overwhelmingly true is they said, uh, we're not doing a pool. They had elementary and intermediate school parents said, yep, I think a pool would be great. That, that makes sense. But general public, it was like seventy percent, no way. And I believe it would have failed and I think they would have took the rest of it with it. That's the vibe I get. So here we are now with the options that we have on the table, so to speak. Other discussion.
So when you're talking funding from fund thirty eight.
Yes, sir.
Now, the two thirty one that we're paying now, is that coming out of the seven hundred?
No.
Billion grounds.
No.
So the seven hundred thousand that's in building grounds, what portion of that would you project to pay for this?
Let's ta- step back and talk about the seven hundred thousand in building grounds. The seven hundred thousand is a part of the two thousand seventeen referendum. That's one point nine million. It could be five hundred thousand, it could be nine hundred thousand, it could be one point nine million just for building the grounds because the other pieces of the puzzle were personnel, technology and safety, security. Those are the other pieces of the puzzle. Seven hundred thousand is simply what we chose for it to be or you chose for it to be back in the day. So if you're increasing the price tag from three million, which two hundred and thirty one thousand, based on the projections and interest rate of four point two five percent is what they projected at Barrett, would get you three million. If you did four hundred thousand or if you did, to want it to get to four million, you'd probably have to increase that line item from two thirty one to about three fifty. If you wanted to get to the, the, the five million borrowing mark, you'd probably have to increase it about a hundred thousand more, getting you to about four fifty. Four fifty represents about a percentage, one percent of what our whole budget is going to be, actually a little more, about one point five percent. That is still very much a weight that we can shoulder using the line of logic you just offered. You would take money from that two thousand and seventeen building grounds portion, it would be devoted right to that payment. And you would then be able to afford the number of dollars you need at five million to do this work at six million total.
So we did, we'd still have the two thirty one budgeted and if we did the six million, that's eight, five hundred fifty thousand. So we would take three hundred thousand.
It wouldn't even be five fifty. You would probably need about two hundred and fifty thousand of the, of that's two thousand seventeen money. And here's the reason you can do that. We, uh, we are pretty confident that the number ones on the list, when we get to the summer of twenty four, we're gonna take a big Sharpie and put an X through those. The number ones plus the stuff that's unforeseen that happened, cooling tower, HVAC system, the elementary school, all the number ones that we're aware of, that we had anywhere close to a number one have been crossed off. I am hopeful. I can only be hopeful that we're not gonna have another eight hundred thousand dollar expense happen along that we didn't project. If it's gonna happen, based on what's happened already, it already has happened. I don't know what else could, could happen at that price tag. Roof's already, the roof of this building is the next big ticket item on the list and that's not set to be replaced for the next five, eight years.
And that's what I'm kinda beating on to try and, people who are watching is understanding that we aren't depleting our cushions.
No.
Whereas we all part of the, we all got the two thirty one and if we add, you know, another three hundred thousand payment to that, that's still budgets four thousand to building our grounds.
Correct. It's, it can be done and it will provide to you and provide to our athletics community and specifically to our student athletes, everything that's on the list that's even been brought up, then it's done and it's over. And I know it's a big pill to swallow, but this is our one and only opportunity to do it. It can satisfy the whole list and we don't have to worry about it. No one ever needs to bring the R word up ever again on athletics. Then it's over. Is your preference to have a additional meeting just devoted to this topic that I can get an audience with John and Troy at? So we can talk about price of turf, price of grass, timelines. That, is that your preference?
I think it's important.
Do you want that meeting? It's probably gonna be hard to schedule it before the eleventh, but I would like to have it scheduled before the twenty third. So somewhere between the eleventh and the twenty third. So I will correspond with these two gentlemen, try and get a date on the calendar and also with you to try and get a date on the calendar and devote some time to talk about just that because a meeting like this, we get all the kinds of other things going on too.
It's, I almost think it would be, you know, like I hate to say field trip or whatever, but to, to tour, I've never walked on Richmond's. I've, I've, you know, I've never walked on Osceola's. Um, I have been on Baldwin's.
Baldwin would probably most comparable to what we're talking about here, would it not? And, and you did that work.
Because of baseball and turf.
And Kraus Anderson did that work. I'd be happy to go see Baldwin's and I know they would have us.
Or there's Hudson too.
And you did both of those jobs.
I went to St. Grace Central, walked on their field.
I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, it's not quite done yet. I don't know if they're playing ball on that yet.
I don't think so.
Well, I know Baldwin has invited us in the past. I'd be happy. I know Eric Russell, their superintendent, he's the Amory boy. By, you know, years gone by, he would be happy to give us a tour and I know John was the point person on that work. Do you wanna go see Baldwin? That'd be awesome. I'd love to go.
I just wanna like, I, I'd love to see differences. I mean, this has to be done.
Yeah, I agree, Joe. You don't wanna put something in and like, oh my goodness, what did we do? I don't want that anymore than you do.
Well, and there, there'll be a point too, if you decide to go to the artificial turf route, there's so many different varieties of turf. You know, the thickness of the mat to the type of infill, there's several different infills to a cushion pad under the turf to add a little bit more cushion for concussions and things like that.
Could you find out, you know, like Osceola, St. Grace Central, what type they, they have put in?
Sure.
So that, you know, if we go there, we know what the differences are with those fields.
And we could also engage with, I mean, Josh is on the field every single Friday night. He's all over the northwest part of the state. And Ryan's on the field and he knows all these folks as well. I think they could probably help us with. This would be a really nice place to go see because it really is plays well. I mean, every ni- every Friday, it seems like we're playing on a turf field somewhere. In baseball as well. Jeremiah, I know would be happy to be part of that conversation. He was giddy after he played in Baldwin. I, I can see why. That could be us.
And Ellsworth is having the exact same conversations you are right. They're not doing this type of borrowing, but they're having the same discussions.
So I will schedule a meeting with all of you and these two gentlemen and we'll proceed forward and have more conversation. Again, you don't need to do anything here this evening.
I had the opportunity earlier tonight, just because I was here early. Um, Troy was here early. And I had the opportunity to engage with Troy earlier tonight and I asked him some pointed questions about expenditures of the maintenance of turf. Can you remember all of those and get me those information and have that for the cost comparison before the October meeting? Thanks.
Hey, can we just get the next agenda item done? George indicated to us that the fork was not all the way into geothermal, but it pretty much is. Is that where we're at? You don't have to have your backpack for that speech.
Step on it, George.
But it, it's, it's always best when it's a, a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down, right? So while I was at dinner tonight, um, uh, I, earlier in the, in the year, I had talked with Sean and Emily Larson about doing a presentation of what it is that is transformationally happening with the Amory School District. When you look at a lot of the programs that you're, um, continuing to really diversify and what it does for the community. I mean, Emily is just, you know, she's the point of the sphere, so to speak. But when you look at your egg program and now you look at what's happening at science and everything else and, and while I was at dinner tonight, um, I was, I received a call from the, from the state of Wisconsin's education committee that they accepted that, uh, presentation and are anxious to hear what, what is going on here with regard to, uh, education and all of the programs. So that's a, that's a wonderful thing for, um, for the district. It's a wonderful thing just in terms of recognition for the staff that has worked so hard to continue to change about education in very different ways. And, uh, and really get excited, kids excited about.
That happens at the school board convention in January and that's a, a really big, strong cross section of the best and brightest in education in the Midwest. So, and we've got a great thing going here. I'm gonna bring in October or November, depending on if I can line it up, all of the incentive grant money that's come in this direction from the hard work from our CTE program. We're second in the season. The only area we trail is the school system that's not anywhere near our size. And third's not anywhere near our size and neither is fourth. So we're, we're doing great things.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Now you can kill us with the geothermal.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
That was my spoonful of sugar.
Now give us the rest.
Bad news, good news.
So we, uh, you know, we're working with two districts doing very similar things, but they're earlier in their process in terms of those programs will be bidding the actual work where here we were trying to get it rolling, um, to be part of a project that's already moving forward. And we worked hard with Kraus and, uh, and worked on the design, worked on getting pricing and, uh, I called John and, and on Friday and said, John, what do we have for numbers? Cause we have to have something to say on Monday and, uh, and he said, I'm going someplace other than home to drown my sorrows. And, uh, after I opened the email and saw the numbers, it's, I said, I, I'll meet you there. But, uh, but the numbers came back and correct me if I'm wrong, John, they're between, depending on the, the work scope, twenty to thirty percent higher than what we had estimated. And, uh, and, you know, it just comes down to there's so much work out there, particularly with regard to the well drillers and stuff like that where, um, I don't think that they're even looking at it with any sincerity, um, to give fair pricing right now. And, um, there's just that much work out there. And so unfortunately, if you're not bidding it and you're just asking for numbers, um, you know, people are looking at it as, um, well, this is, uh, this is an opportunity to just save hundred thousand dollars a well instead of, uh, instead of looking at it with any sort of intent. So, uh, so unfortunately we worked hard to try to get it to work. We, uh, looked at a lot of different ways to try to find ways to, to come up with additional funds to help with the other projects that the district wants. But, uh, but this one just seems to be running its course. So I don't know, John, if there's anything else you have to add about that?
No, it was a good due diligence, right? And part of it is like, it's like costing, okay? So it comes down to it, it's just the energy payback wasn't there for someone to pencil. So at least you're annoying that, but you're not gonna add. You know, it's like whether it's solar panels or geothermal, you run the cost, you're on the chain, you're saving. So it's a check and balance. Now, if anybody asks you can say, we checked.
Well, a couple of months ago, you gave the go ahead. We were ready to do that and then you put the stop to it and, and now it's just, it's just over. So we proceed forward, no harm, no foul. You, you did what you needed to do based on the information you had.
Yep, and we agreed to move forward. You know, we, we advanced the design and everything at our own risk. Um, just because we wanted to, to see it for ourselves and, and go through that process. And we did find an underwriter to say that they would sign for the forty percent American, um, and, and go through that effort with us. But even that, we couldn't get the numbers to pencil out where the rebate coming back was enough to offset the cost, additional cost to the district to, to modify the system. So, so that's where we landed.
All right. So we tabled that or did we negate that?
You just said, I just said that would bring it back next month because they were gonna do their due diligence and look at it. There's nothing that you need to do. You put a stop to it already. It's just continued to be stopped. There's nothing you need to do.
It died on the table. It died.
A force is now in it to use George's analogy.
That's right, that's right.
It's the way it is. All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next we have our second reading.
Uh, this you, policy you asked me to bring back, it's the field trip and athletic transportation policy. It reads, it's brief, so I'll read it to you. All extra field trip and athletic bus driving opportunities, not including transportation for direct classroom instruction, shall first be offered to route holding bus drivers. If route holding bus drivers do not express an interest in these opportunities, other qualified district staff will have the ability to drive bus transportation for these field trips and athletics. Qualified meaning they have to have a bus license, can't just be anybody. Josh is not driving people around in the bus and this is good because I don't think he can drive a bus.
Oh, sure he can.
Okay.
Good, maybe the kids don't.
It's an automatic.
Well, uh, we have a new face in the room. Ryan is here and I'm not sure if Ryan, if you wanted to weigh in on this conversation. You're the guy that's the point person with the bus drivers. Come on up and we can have this conversation and decide what to do.
This was actually brought to me by some of my drivers and, um, our bus drivers don't have a ton of hours. So they kinda felt like if they could get dibs on some of the extra stuff and might, maybe we could keep more drivers around, they would go find something else. And I mean, it does save a little money having like some of your custodials, somebody who's already on the payroll, but really it's, I think it's minimal.
I think we discussed this before and I think we came out somewhere around the cost of like twenty thousand dollars a year of savings of having our staff, um, driving. So I think, I thought, I thought that was a number that had came to mind, but.
I can't remember that.
I don't remember that either.
So, um, I guess I have some concerns that, um, we're, we're talking about, we, when we talked about raising bus driver pay, um, we talked about how important it was to have those bus drivers in front of our kids and be consistent. Um, and that's how we felt that they deserved more, more pay. Um, I think that if we're going to let a route driver then have an opportunity to just drive, um, let's say an extracurricular, a football trip, let's say from here to Ellsworth, um, and then we're taking them off of their route. Um, that kind of then becomes a double edged sword. We paid you because we thought you were important enough to have in front of those kids on a, on a very consistent basis. And now we're letting you not be in front of those kids on a consistent basis for maybe more money, a, a little bit more money. Um, I know I've talked to other bus drivers, some sub bus drivers, that it's hard to get into a regular route bus and not have, um, anything that is exactly what, where they need to go, who needs to be dropped off. I feel like people who drive our routes every day have a routine. Um, that routine is when they get back to the bus garage, they're checking that bus, they're, um, cleaning that bus, they're making sure that all the kids are off. If we're putting in a sub bus driver and allowing that regular bus driver to take an extracurricular trip, is something going to get missed?
This, uh, this is more towards the during the day stuff in between the routes. Our route drivers are already driving it and the staff isn't interested in picking it up. Maybe one here and there. If they have, uh, a child in that sport, as I see that more often, they wanna drive that specific sport, you know?
But then you're getting taken off a route though.
No, no, I'm talking like field trip. They go do college tours in the middle of the day. They're back by route time because they still have to be to do their regular route. So that was most of the, what this was based off of is the stuff during the day.
So should this be reworded so you're not potentially incentivizing a route driver to want to take an extracurricular route?
Cause that's not really the way that I've understood this policy.
And I think maybe that was it, maybe Sean and I didn't put that together the right way.
You can say whatever you want to say at this point. Nothing's been passed. We can change whatever you want.
But I think it was more what I was envisioning was during the day, in between their routes, having a teacher drive a college tour rather than a, a route driver. And I think that's what the, that's why I brought it from my drivers to saying, hey, we'd like to pick up some stuff in between to make a little extra money rather than have a, another staff member do it.
If we do a college visit and we have a teacher drive, does that teacher get paid to drive?
No, so that's where the savings would be. And I, I don't think honestly that it would be a ton of it, but they're.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember a conversation. I mean, I, I know we talked about this, but I don't remember it. Twenty thousand dollar, uh, cost difference.
This truly doesn't happen very often. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't give you but a handful of examples. In that it doesn't happen very often, I guess my recommendation would be to drop it here and now.
Yeah, yeah. Do you need the policy?
Do we need a policy for something that rarely happens?
Right. And Charlie, what you were saying, and then if we do have a teacher or a coach, they are getting paid to drive the bus as well.
When?
When they're doing like the extracurricular athletic stuff. So if I pay, we're paying them to drive on top of it. So it's not, it's just flip flopping who gets paid. Rather than a sub bus driver.
Right.
Then you're having a coach or a teacher.
Right. My concern was though, if we're not the pay then in that, in that instance, my concern was if we were taking a regular route driver and letting them drive an extracurricular trip that
Right.
Then that was a concern. Then I don't care about the pay. It's gonna be the same pay either way, just a matter of who gets paid, but I'm concerned of But I'm concerned of then are we going to miss kids? Are we gonna, are we talking about kid safety? You know, security, trauma-sensitive schools, having that same driver for those kids. So, that's where I was, because I was completely under the impression that this was not just for during the day.
And I think that was misunderstood in that, uh, cause I do agree. I think, you know, like I'm driving a full right route right now. Until I find someone who can do a full route and take it on, I don't like switching around. It is hard for the kids. You, you don't know them. Someone's, is causing trouble, you, a sub-driver can't start, they're not going to know who it is.
They'll find out. So, currently, you know, when there is a need for a daytime route of some sort, not a regular route, but a, an extra route, do you just offer it to, uh, some, some of our drivers?
I do. Yep. And we start, you know, usually it's by seniority. They get to pick first. The driver's been here the longest, they get first dibs on it. Same with athletics. If they want to do the athletics, we go through the rotation of the drivers who, you know, by seniority. And they can pick the routes they would like to cover.
And, and they're not missing their regular routes.
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's kind of, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right. And I, I think that this was, I think it was brought up more in the compensation committee or something like that. Some of the drivers brought it up.
But when they do that, they're compensated their normal pay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is something that we can do as principals and we can talk it over case by case, rather than have a specific policy on it.
Yeah, cause the way this one's written, I mean, you know, if they want to, you know, drive to an athletic event that they have to leave at three thirty, well, you're out a driver. And they chose to do this instead.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean.
I think if they wanted to bring it back to compensation committee, just as part of a handbook or part of that compensation schedule worded differently, then maybe we can look at it, but I just don't see the need for a policy for it.
Okay.
I, I don't want to see like us micromanaging you. I want you to be able to make this choice. So, I, I'll be honest, I don't really like the idea of like, he's the guy we hire to make this choice. Why, you don't have to go ahead, you know, principle to prove this. Like, I want you to make the decision, so, um, right?
Absolutely. We hired Ryan to be in charge of bus transportation. I think part of Ryan's role is to advocate for his bus drivers and he's seeking to do that. This simply isn't the spot by which we're going to make it happen. There's another, other ways to do that, I guess is the way I see it. But I agree with you, yes. Ryan is the person in charge of bus transportation and bus drivers. I agree.
I think when he was getting that work and asking the administrators was just, is there a need that he can fill?
So, so my building is probably where this happens the most with the college tours and stuff like that. And Ryan and I are totally good on communication. There's, there's no issues there whatsoever. The nice thing, you know, I've got Ryan Humble, Justin Chu, Derek Meyer, Alan Carlson. And when I can send these guys, they double as a chaperone and a bus driver. They know my kids, you know. Not that high schoolers would misbehave on a college field trip, but.
Couldn't imagine.
Yeah, right.
Well, I think.
And, and honestly, it, it just becomes a budget issue, you know, when I send a bus to Stout, Eau Claire, you know, WITC, I'm trying to minimize the costs. It's, uh, cause I'm trying to provide these opportunities for kids.
And that money has to come from somewhere and it's going to come out of your building budget.
Correct.
And we could be using that money for other things. And I think when you have, uh, your teachers that are driving the bus and are willing to do it and knowing that they're not going to get paid to do it, but that it's a savings for the district, it's a service for the district. And they're the same people that these kids have during the day. I think that really does fit in with our trauma-sensitive school that we're not adding another adult for somebody to have to take care of them. I think there's a myriad of factors, I think, that goes into this and I can appreciate people wanting to advocate for their, their pay and their jobs. But I think it's also a consideration that we looked at, that we didn't farm out to a bus company. That, ways that we could keep the cost down and not having to go through a bus company and employ people here.
Right. And I, I would, hearing stories from different supervisors and drivers that come from different places, I think it's really great that we can keep it in district.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks. So, I make a motion to.
Died on the table again?
Yeah, I don't know. I think we have to, I, we have to do something with it. So, I'll move to, um.
Well, just table it. I'll bring it to the advisory committee and if, and if it breathes life there, I'll bring it back in a reconstituted form. So, just table it.
We can, I'll move to table the field trip and athletic transportation policy as presented.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go. All right. Next up, donations to the district.
We got lots of donations to the district, which is always good news. So, thank you to the following organizations for the generous donations of school supplies for students in classrooms. Dollar Tree, there's a picture of said donations. Amory Police Department. Cardinal Glass Industries Incorporated. Process Technology. Dental Arts Family Dentistry. East Emmanuel Lutheran Church. SMC. Other donations. Uh, thank you to the Amory Lions Club for the donation of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to the Angel Fund from funds raised in the annual golf tournament. I believe it was the thirteenth annual. I did participate. Uh, Jessica drove the cart. She didn't lose any balls that way. Brad was with us. Paula escaped and was replaced by Kelly Fitzgerald, who golfs a lot more than you, so we're probably a good replacement. Brad and I contributed many golf balls to this tournament. Many, many, many golf balls were contributed.
Wonderful.
Uh, thank you to Save-A-Lot and Amory Express for their donation at the Warrior Gas Pump of thirteen hundred and sixty-one dollars. That goes typically to the Angel Fund, but sometimes ownership, Doug Reinhardt in this case, has something he particularly would like to see it go to. Uh, we simply haven't determined that yet. It just happened a couple of weeks ago. Grants. Uh, the Eddie H. and Donald O. Fund and Amory FFA received a grant for six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents from the Eddie H. and Donald O. Fund of the Amory Area, uh, Community Foundation.
Yeah. Wow.
Many thanks for your generosity and support.
Make a motion, we accept the donations as presented?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, now personnel items.
New employment contracts and extracurricular contracts for Kelly, Kylie Holzneck, clubhouse assistant teacher Heather Hutter, clubhouse assistant teacher, Janice Stanek, middle school track assistant coach, Bailey Peterson, seventh grade volleyball assistant coach, Amanda Rowling, middle school track assistant coach, Paula Stevens, dance line co-advisor, and Tracy Wong, oh boy. Wonget, okay. Clubhouse assistant teacher, reassignments for Lisa Gunderson from assistant to lead, Brianna Iverson from assistant teacher to para, uh, Hope Johnson from assistant to lead, and resignations for Kelly Holzneck and clubhouse assistant teacher, Justin Chu, varsity track head coach, and Tracy Wonget. Clubhouse assistant teacher and termination of Cheryl Weeks for clubhouse assistant teacher.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept those personnel items? Steve, a second?
A second.
Joe, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So, I'll read this, uh, for closed session. So, consider an employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C. To have a motion go to closed.
So moved.
Charlie and Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There we are. We're in closed. I thank you much.